Joe, will you lead us off?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and individual.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please. Emily?
Absolutely. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Horvath.
Here.
Cunningham.
Here.
Davio.
Here.
During.
Here.
Henderson.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Kinville is absent. Pennard.
Here.
Rieger.
Here.
Reuter. Roberts.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Stapansky.
Here.
Stokes is absent. Fosberg.
Here.
Walra. Wicks.
Here.
Win.
Here.
Fourteen hundred and sixteen votes present.
Thank you, Emily. Are there any corrections to the August twelfth meeting minutes?
Oh, and the twenty-sixth. Their special meeting as well.
And the tw- twenty-sixth, right?
And the twenty-sixth.
The motion? Greg, Kyle, all in favor, say aye. Posed? Carried? Just want everybody to note that there's two sign-in sheets, one for public speaking at, on the agenda today, and a separate sheet for speaking on any county item. Okay, so, so you'll see, you'll see two sheets. And if you want to talk about something that we have on the agenda today, that would be the first sheet. Um, following this board meeting, there'll be a joint meeting between the Government Operations Committee and the Highway Buildings and Grounds Committee. Today, it's nine-one-one, as everyone knows, and we mourn the dead and fight for the living. I'd like to take a moment of silence for all the people we've lost. Thank you very much. Public hearing today, our first public hearing, our only public hearing, is a micro enterprise community development block grant, CDBG project.
Chairman, can I interrupt you, please?
Yes.
And ask for a moment of silence for the great Christian American Charlie Kirk, who was murdered yesterday?
I was gonna do that a little bit later, but we can do it now.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
We gotta wait two more minutes.
Oh, hang on. I'm too fast today. So, uh, who's doing this?
Uh, it's out of planning, Scott.
Scott, are you here?
Yeah.
Scott, can you just say a few words on the, on this CDBG project?
All right, really, I'll make it really quick. During the course of these projects, we're required to hold two public hearings. This is the second one. Um, and this specific project related to micro enterprise development grants for, uh, what turned out to be eight businesses, uh, small businesses throughout Madison County. Um, we've helped, uh, those businesses with startup costs, um, operation cost, equipment expenses. And, uh, we're happy to say that we're pretty much through the project at this point, and, uh, we were able to help eight businesses, um, hopefully on the path to success.
Say one more minute's worth of stuff.
Hey, that.
Businesses, how about that?
All right.
All right.
Uh, Village Clay, which is, uh, in the town of Hamilton, uh, Dew Bloom, which is in the town of Casanova. Johnny Appleseed, which is in the town of Nelson, H Gray, which is in the town of Casanova, Med Mount, which is in the town of Brookfield, uh, Ruby Begonia, which is in Chitango, town of Sullivan, uh, Peterborough Table, which is in town of Peterborough, and Farmstead eighteen sixty-eight from the town of Fenner. That probably was too fast.
They were always too fast there.
No.
Okay, great job. Thank you so much, Scott. Appreciate it. Okay, can I have a motion to open the, the, uh, public hearing? Joe and Lauren? Have a sec, or have a second, um, buddy here to speak for or against the, uh, this block grant? Hearing run, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Evan and Greg? All in favor, say aye. Posed? Carried? All right. So now we have our first, uh, public comment period. Anyone here to speak on today's agenda? There was no, no one on the list, okay? All right. Right, so, over a year ago, uh, this board formed a solid waste and recycling committee. Uh, they are made up of all people, uh, the committee was made up of people living in Madison County, uh, mostly retired engineers. And, uh, they worked for the last year on, uh, what we think is a very, very important asset for the, for the county. And today to speak on, on, uh, the years-long work, uh, and to be introduced by our chairman from Hamilton, uh, Evan Schwartz.
Thank you, Jim. Um, yep, I'm happy to, um, have had the experience to, to, uh, chair this committee of really bright, uh, folks who uh, really care about what happens to the landfill and what happens to the, the citizens and the, you know, the water and the air in our community. And they've done a great job of reviewing and working, working with the solid waste department, um, working with Greg and really looking at the facts and trying to come up with recommendations about how to manage our, our resource and make sure that we can extend it for as long as possible and, and provide a great benefit both for our community, um, and surrounding communities. So today, we, um, one of our members, Bob Kuchenberg, who's a, um, a licensed PE for, what did you say, forty-five years approximately, more or less. We're not going to get into those specific details, but his specialty is water resources, and he's actually our PFOS, um, expert on the committee. But he's also the one who's been chosen or volunteered to make this presentation. So he's done a great job. And so I, I'm turning it over to Bob and thanking him for his service, uh, in advance. Thank you.
What to add to that? Bob was the, uh, the principal person on the Anadaga Lake cleanup of six hundred and fifty million dollar project. So this is kind of a tiny project compared to that, right, Bob?
Okay, thank you. So, um, and thank you to the board as well as the solid waste committee for having our committee in place and giving us an opportunity, mostly retired folks, not all of us, but, um, to, to use some of our, we think, expertise and to be involved in something that we care about in our own community. So, and, and why me? Why did I volunteer? Well, as I get older, my hearing starts going a little bit. And when Evan said, who would like to present, I thought she said, who would like ice cream? And I said, me. So here I am. But, uh, truth be known, I'm happy to represent the committee. It was a great committee, and, uh, we want to continue on. So. Okay, good. So let's see if I make sure I know how this works. Okay, so we had, uh, four, uh, major responsibilities, uh, as the committee. And we're really here to talk about the first one today. We're going to really make our recommendations on the landfill uh, size and how to make the landfill cost-effective and operate efficiently into the future. At the end of, towards the end of the presentation, I'll tell you what our, um, status is on the other three, the PFOS, um, work as well as, uh, gas, reusing gas, and then, um, the solar, uh, research on solar on the landfill. So, okay, I need to remember to move the. How does that work, Jim? This one? Nope, there we go. All right, so the members of the committee, um, we had three from the county, you know who they are. Uh, so I'll talk about the community members. Uh, Randy Hershey, uh, PE. Randy's retired. Randy spent years working on the Madison County landfill. He retired from B and L Engineers, and he brought all kinds of experience on why they did certain things, certain ways, and why they designed and built, um, some of the structures the way they did. Uh, so he's just a, a great benefit to this committee. Even I know who's me, so you know, uh, my background is, um, water. Uh, so my, I naturally then took the lead on the PFOS work. She called me the expert. I wouldn't call myself an expert on PFOS. Um, there may be a half a dozen experts in the whole country on PFOS. It's a very complicated issue, but we're learning. In fact, I have a, a webinar right after this presentation to attend on PFOS. Uh, and then we're very fortunate to have John Familio. John is, um, is a, uh, I think he's deputy provost at Colgate University, and he's a lead green associate. And John brought a lot of perspective, different than us engineers that like to look, get into the details. John really, uh, just look at the bigger picture and look at recycling, seriously look at recycling and waste reduction, which is going to be a real challenge going forward in the future. Dick Williams, um, is retired as well. Dixon engineer with, uh, petroleum experience. And, uh, he's took the lead on the gas utilization. And, uh, Dick's got lots of experience with, um, petroleum as well as landfills, so he brings a lot to the table. So in terms of where we're from, Randy's Oneida, from Oneida. I'm the town of Casanova. John Familio is, uh, Hamilton, town of Hamilton. And Dick Williams is in the town of, uh, Nelson. So we have a pretty good representation around the county. And we're all from central New York. We all grew up here, so this is our home, and we care. And that's why we're on this committee. Okay, let's get to this one. Did I go too far? Okay, good. So we'll get right to the recommendations. So, um, the, the, the first item of our charge is, has to do with the landfill size, the landfill efficiency, and how to operate the landfill in the future. And, um, we spent, I think I might have skipped over a slide, let's see here. Yeah, we're okay. Let's move along. So, you have to bear with me. I used to do a lot of public presenting, but since I've been retired, I haven't done any. I just talk to myself mostly when I'm doing woodwork. So, um, just, you'll get through it, bear with me. I like doing this, but you'll have to stick with me a little bit. So. So we, uh, recommend, and it's a real strong recommendation, the committee really spent time on this and a lot of back and forth on where to go. Um, we, we're recommending to increase the weight accept, the waste acceptance into this landfill by about fifty thousand tons per year. The current flow into the landfill is fifty thousand tons per year. So essentially, it would double the landfill in terms of what's coming into the landfill. Um, and then we recommend doing a permit application, uh, up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand tons per year to provide some buffer. Expect to get to a hundred and twenty-five thousand tons per year, but, um, you'll see when I talk about where this is going to come from, why we need some buffer and why we need some, um, room to move around. So we want to keep control of the waste flow into the ma- landfill, uh, and not just have it open. It's going to come in from everywhere across the country. And we found that you can do that legally through intermunicipal agreements. And, uh, we can do that with neighboring counties. We have enough needs from coming from neighboring counties. Uh, micro being one of the issues that's going to come up, that, uh, could, could push, um, Anadaga County into looking for more place for waste. We don't know how that would work out, but there's other counties that definitely have needs. There's counties that are trucking to east of us. Where I grew up in, at Seago County, the landfill was closed a few years ago. Um, they're trucking their, their waste right past us on the thruway. And, um, there's a number of counties like that here in the region that we, we think would be happy to have, um, an intermunicipal agreement with us. And I still say, I keep saying us, even though I'm not part of the county management, but, um, I've come to accept my position as part of, because of our work on the committee. So you'll hear me say us and we a lot. Uh, so we think that we could accept, um, we know that we can get up, an agreement with another community, and maybe it'll be, maybe it'll be more than one. Maybe we'll take some ways from some neighboring county and some ways from another neighboring county. We don't know that yet. That's still to be worked out. That's why it's a range of future waste coming into landfill. Um, we, our analysis shows that somewhere around eighty thousand tons per year total would be enough to balance the budget. So we're thinking somewhere between eighty and a hundred thousand tons per year, depending on the communities and the agreements we can come up with to, uh, to bring that waste in. We want agreements that are, that are beneficial for Madison County, but also work for central New York region. So then, the, was the public in here? It's the county to keep, uh, clear communications with the public, and today's presentation really is the start of that. To let the public know what we're thinking and, and why we're doing this. So, so how did we arrive? How do we get to the next slide? How do we arrive at these conclusions? So, um, we started, um, we, they gave us so much information from, um, Greg and Jim, um, and Evan, others in the county and the solid waste committee, they just loaded us up with reports and data and, uh, memos, and, and we just spent a lot of time, a lot of time reading all these things. And, um, one of the most key things was, the county spent quite a significant amount, significant amount of money on engineering work with the cornerstone engineering. And we did a lot of work to validate, um, what they said. We just didn't accept it. And so, you know, we talked to other landfills in the area. We talked to other landfills and engineering companies that are working on landfills across the country um, to look at, um, how, how does, how does that report really, um, come up? Does it come up to speed? And when we found it is really, um, we could validate the report. You know what, what cornerstone said, um, we thought was right on track. So what happens is, through all that analysis, that when you look at a landfill, and we're really a small landfill, when you look at landfills across the country, it's because of all the regulations and the requirements and everything that you deal with in a landfill. This size of a landfill is really hard to be efficient. We're really not efficiently using labor and, um, and equipment that we have, actually. So, uh, and then the cost to comply with new regulations, PFOS, leachate treatment, gas, uh, the increase in the thickness of liners that's required now on landfills. And, uh, just the reporting alone, uh, it's the same for little landfills it is for a big landfill, and you have a lot less income to work with. So it really came down to, um, it's, it's hard to, for this landfill to be efficient at this size. Um, and we, we did a lot of evaluation of the current operations. We really pushed back on, pushed back pretty hard on Greg. Uh, that was some pretty interesting times because, um, we really pushed Greg hard in terms of why do you do things this way? Why do you use that type of daily cover? Why are you doing this or that or the other thing in the landfill? Because as we learned and talked to other landfills around the country, especially bigger ones, there's other ways of doing things. But it's, it's a matter of budget. It costs more money to do things, uh, differently. So we'll validate that the operations at this landfill are really efficient, and we think as good as can be. And then we looked at the goals for the future. The county has a goal of maintaining the existing transfer stations. We talked about that. We challenged it, um, but we came to the same conclusion. The transfer stations should really stay in place. So that's a good goal. The existing recycling program is, should also stay in place. We, we support that totally. It, those aren't two things that the committee gets directly involved in, but we wanted to look at those and support the solid waste, uh, committee and the county as a whole, um, on those items. And then we wanted to look at the impacts of future organis, organic waste recycling and composting, because those things are happening around the country, and they'll probably eventually happen here. We don't know. So that would, the, the waste coming into the landfill, if that happens, that's a good thing, uh, but it would have an impact on flow into the landfill. So we have to consider all of those items. Get to the next one. Okay. So what are the benefits? So, again, the recommendation is to, is to, basically, we're doubling the flow coming into the landfill. So it's, it's quite a size increase. And there's benefits, and there's challenges. We'll talk about both. So the benefits is, it really will enable the county to maintain the existing recycling program, the transfer stations, and other community programs. The, the landfill at an increased size can balance the budget. And it, it took us a while to get to that point, to really understand how that happens and why it happens. But it's a matter of the things that I've talked about that are required for big landfills as well as little landfills. And, uh, and it's being efficient with the, um, manpower as well as the, um, equipment on the site. So with a pretty small increase in equipment and almost no or very little increase in manpower, this landfill can handle, uh, considerably more input. And that brings budget, because there's tipping fees with all that. And that gives us an opportunity to do these other things we need to do. Uh, we also would like to increase, uh, the quantity. That'll increase the quantity of gas over time, as the landfill is bigger. Uh, but we want, we want, we would like to increase, to increase the quality of the landfill gas, uh, so we can utilize the gas as an energy source. You just hate seeing that gas being burned off and flirted off when it has a use. So, um, this, this will allow those things to go forward. It's, yeah. Seems like it takes me twice to get. Or? Hold it? That's right?
You're good.
So, yeah, so these benefits. So, I get there after a while. Just with me. Um, so we can balance the budget. I already talked about that. So, promise to reserve for future requirements, because leachate's going to be, it's compressed, but it's also expensive. And the treatment of leachate isn't just a good thing environmentally. It's going to be required, and it's going to be, there are going to be regulations. We don't know exactly when we're coming, but the regulations will be there, because our leachate goes to the, um, uh, to the, um, Oneida wastewater treatment plant, and they will have requirements for their, um, PFOS going into reflet. So if we, if we're putting PFOS into the inflow and a normal wastewater treatment plant doesn't remove PFOS, we have to pre-treat. So that's coming. Uh, and there's other requirements that are getting more, they're getting tougher on landfills. Uh, the liner thickness has increased. It's a lot more expensive. Um, we think there'll be requirements in the future, or might be requirements in the future, on, um, fugitive gas coming out the landfill. So there's a number of things on regulations that are going to get more difficult, and we'll be versed to handle those in the future. And then, uh, we support the idea of, uh, community that's dealing here every day with the impacts of the landfill in the town of Lincoln to, uh, getting an increase in community benefits. And that wouldn't be something that the committee would directly be involved with, but we support that activity. So I'm going to take those, um, I'm going to look at challenges now, and we got three challenges. So we're waste hauling, uh, community environmental impacts, and landfill life expectancy. And we'll talk about each one and how they could be mitigated, but, um, let's not kid ourselves. These are challenges. There are impacts. When it, landfill is going to be doubled in its size in terms of the flow coming into it, um, there's going to be impacts. And, but those, those impacts should be able to be dealt with. Uh, the first one is on the waste hauling. There it goes. So, just takes a minute. Okay. So it's interesting. The waste hauling, uh, you know, first glance, you think about it, you're going to double the size of the landfill and the input. You're going to double the number of trucks coming to the landfill every day. And there's two things that impact that. So the, the local pickups, the in-county hauling has decreased the number of trucks in the last few years significantly. And the example would be Syracuse hauling, uh, purchasing HR refuse. So my neighborhood's a good example of that. I live on a private road. There's a lot of private roads in, in, uh, in Madison County, uh, and a lot of the town of yeah, around here particularly, especially around all the lakes and, um, our, our town and towns nearby. And so the first thing that happened when Syracuse hauling came in to our community is, they said they were going to pick up on Fridays, and Friday came and Friday went, they didn't pick up. The next Friday came, the next Friday went, they didn't pick up. So people started making calls. And we found that they said, well, they said to us that, uh, they can't bring the large trucks down what they call fire lanes. And that's all the private roads around the county. And, um, so then our community, our, our community, our neighborhood started looking at smaller truck haulers with smaller trucks. And we had, started getting somebody lined up. Lo and behold, the next week, HR shows up with their big trucks, and we were able to get through our fire lane with no problems. So why, why I mentioned that, why I'm talking about that is because it's competition. Competition drives this, and competition is driving the larger trucks. And they didn't want to give up. When, when they started looking at the number of private roads that they would be giving up, they didn't want to give that up. And they figured out how to get their trucks down our neighborhood, through our neighborhood. They drive on my road and they make the turn, but that's the nature of a private, a narrow private road. So what's happened, what the landfill folks are telling us is that since twenty twenty-two, there's twelve fewer trucks, truck visits per day into landfill because of these larger trucks. And that's pretty significant. On the other hand, bringing waste in from the outside the county, they will come in with very large trucks, probably live bottom, uh, trailer trucks like the one you see in the picture there. Um, and two, two to thirty-six tons per load. So the extra fifty thousand tons per day coming into the landfill, we'll have six to ten trucks per day. So the result is, we get a decrease in trucks coming to the landfill, coming across our highways. The number of trucks, not the size, obviously, but the number, uh, since twenty twenty-two, we're actually going to have a decrease, even though we take, we're going to double the waste flow into the landfill. And, and, and I'm trying to, I'm glossing over it. It's an impact, okay? Truck traffic and larger trucks is certainly an impact, but the number of trucks has actually gone down. So we, um, end up with a, with a benefit here that, uh, we wouldn't expect when we started looking at this. So the second one we want to talk about in terms of impacts is environmental. And again, uh, we don't want to gloss over it. It's important. It's important to the community and to all of us. But larger landfills have a bigger range of options, and we know the barrier cover has been an issue. Keeping the landfill covered at the end of each day and not having things fly off in the wind, paper and so on, and plastics flying, any litters and so on that are associated, birds associated with a landfill not being covered is a big issue. And we know it's been an issue here. It's an issue at every landfill. The bigger landfills with more budget and, and more waste being handled have better options for daily cover. And there's a lot of newer innovative options out there that cost money. And so when we challenged Greg on going to a different type of cover on the landfill, it just came down to size and money. We just couldn't do it at our, our current size. But in the future, doubling the, the flow doubling the the flow into the landfill, we'll do different cover um options, daily cover options and definitely improve it. A lot of it just has to do with the equipment and hours of work, hours in the day and manpower. Some of it has to do with technologies for different types of daily cover. Changes that that we're finding from bigger fills, we spent a lot of time talking to folks from CD and Smith, who I retired from. We're working on um landfill in a very large landfill in Florida, Florida. Because they get a lot of rainfall there as well, first groundwater and um problems that's causing with gas collection, how they're dealing with it. So uh there's things we can do to improve that, um but it takes money, same thing. And then the first use of gas is going to offset energy consumption in other places. So that's a good environmental thing. Plus, um, it should be a source of income. Chain treatment, which is required by regulations anyway, but that's going to be an environmental benefit. Those forever chemicals just need to be removed from our waste uh waste stream when it gets just discharged into water or receiving waters. So a bigger landfill, bigger impact, um but we think there's a lot of um opportunities here to mitigate those impacts. And then the the third impact we talked about at length is the life of the landfill. And again, it seems that you double the capacity, you're going to cut the landfill life in half. And some things at the time that um that we're putting, we we had a pleasant surprise when we looked at it. So I'm going to go through this slide in a little more detail on the rooms up there because it's a little more complicated than the others. So in two thousand and seven, there was a projection for a hundred years of life left at this landfill. The Madison County landfill up to two thou- uh twenty seven. And but that was based on sixty thousand tons per year and we've been seeing roughly fifty thousand tons per year since that, since two thousand and seven. Um, uh, they plan when they did that analysis on more biosolids, which are more low shear waste and a different type of daily cover that which would take up more space. So in terms of the way you look at the second bullet, the current projection is based on how the landfill has actually been operating since two thousand and seven, how we expect it to continue to operate in terms of the waste, the type of waste and the airspace and how it's being operated. So today, eighteen years later, uh, we get a hundred and twenty years remaining at the current waste. So we take it takes us up to twenty-one forty-five. If we double the capacity to a hundred thousand input to a hundred thousand tons per year, we still have seventy-two years of life remaining on the landfill. And so that's only a ten-year decrease in what they projected in two thousand and seven. So we think that's a really important analysis, an important thing to keep track of. Because the life of this landfill is important to all of us here in the county. So we 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 spent a lot of time realizing that and understanding what it meant. And we thought that came up to be a pleasing. So those are the three challenges that we identified. I'm sure there'll be others. And if you have other impacts to talk about, then our committee should really take a look at those and we should look at how we can mitigate the impacts as we go forward. So additional recommendations uh that we have, um and we'll be talking about in the future is the PFOS, um the whole range of chemicals associated with PFOS. And there's that there's roughly five thousand or more chemicals that make up these long-term um these these long-term chemicals that kind of stay forever in our environment. Uh, and we all call it PFOS, but there's a whole bunch. There's PFOA and there's there's a whole range of those types of chemicals. Um, and it's complicated. We first thought that we could engage with a vendor or manufacturer and there's there's half a dozen or so uh technologies out there that we could um that we could look at and narrow it down to two or three, do some pilot testing and put any unit and bing, we're on our way. We're treating for PFOS. It's it's we could get caught doing that because uh it's so complex. The the chemicals involved in PFOS are not the same from landfill to landfill. And then some of the chemicals that are, we we call them um uh pre or pre-fos chemicals, they can convert from one chemical to another at the wastewater treatment plant during aeration. So you might create more PFOS even though you didn't measure it. So you might do all this treatment and leave something in the waste stream that goes to the treatment plant to the iteration process and boom, the PFOS comes back up. So it's complex. Uh, we want to make sure we get the right technology, the right size, that we do it once and we're not replaying it. So we're going to be uh talking here in the future about um bringing in a consultant and that'll come. Uh, we support the county's recycling program, uh the transfer stations, keeping the transfer station and keeping these other programs that the that the landfill solid waste uh people do to benefit the community. Um, and we're strongly, strongly looking at how can we use the gas there? And we're learning from other landfills that there's a whole range of things that people can do onsite. And we can do either with a heat exchanger, burning the gas or a separate boiler. You can do a wood we could do a pottery art kiln. Um, we can heat the landfill that are at the landfill that are now being heated with purchased gas. Um, there's a whole range of kinds of things and we're reaching out and talking to different um uh businesses around to see who might come onto the landfill and use that gas. So we just really want to have that gas get reused. I think you you probably all know that the that the um that the um converting to electricity using a generator, that had been removed. We took a look at that and that's for good reason. If race models in the country on that type of activity. So if they pull the generator out, they were doing, and it turns out we don't have enough gas of enough quality to to run a generator and make electricity. So we need to look at other things. And there's plenty of other things that we can do with that gas. It'd be very beneficial. And we uh support um increased benefits to the host community, the town of Lincoln and the town of Lincoln Fire Department. Okay, so um or really thank you for this opportunity um to have some input. And uh I got just one more message and I guess you'll open it up for Kevin agent. Um, and that was that um even um I like mint chocolate chip pretty good. So when you go off the ice cream.
Okay, I heard.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
First off, thank you for this undertaking, volunteering your time. And it probably did make you talk to yourself a little bit going through all the stuff. Uh, I would recommend the Drifton Dryer for ice cream. I'll treat if I know you're coming down there. Evan, a low jan, bring it down from wherever and we'll have a little ice cream. I just uh is a PFOA, I'm not on any community, so I'm pretty ignorant about what goes on up there, but is a PFOS treated onsite now or does it go down to a local uh sewer treatment plant?
Yeah, so the amount of PFOS is not treated now. Treatment plant cannot remove phosphorus. The normal wastewater treatment plant does not remove PFOS. So
So would that be something in the future where you have to develop something onsite to 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 alleviate this?
Uh, yes, to be an onsite. I mean, we actually could treat half the treatment plant as well, but since the um we we think that doing it onsite is going to be best for our condition because the leachate goes into a dedicated sewer and then at some point before it reaches the treatment plant, it blends in with the with the municipal, with the city sewer system.
I see. You mentioned the quality of the gas. How do you how do you change what comes out of the ground for gas? What garbage you put in or?
So yeah, on the waste, but couldn't um a lot of discussion about what's happening in the landfill. We're having trouble with perched water in the landfill. They get these little areas of groundwater to get perched and hung up in there. And it could be due to a large amount of plastics that are going into landfill. We really can't change that. Um, some of it could be to the the type of daily cover and what we're using for daily cover and how it's being put down. So as we have more opportunity to do different things with daily cover, um the daily cover there's, we're going to have to do more on that, but the daily cover may be creating an impermeable barrier. So then the water gets hung up and once the water gets hung up in the landfill, then the gas can't produce it the way it should. Because it's kind of drowning itself in the biological activity and then the gas can't be extracted as it should be. So then the quality of the gas, because it's not being extracted, goes down. We get less methane. So our methane in this gas is around thirty or thirty-five percent methane. A landfill like this should have in a range of fifty percent methane.
Okay.
So if we can, if if we can deal with the groundwater that's stuck up in the landfill um by how it's being operated over time, it's going to take a few years to make that happen. It's not going to happen overnight.
Right.
Then the gas should be of better quality and we'll get more gas as well.
And I I just, I'm sure you're aware of this, but my understanding is it's always, we've always tried, always tried to have trash pay for trash. That was always a goal of the landfill. I think that's sustainable. I really do. I've always said, we knew this from from the start before uh when it was a hot su- subject that we knew we'd have to take in more garbage. That's just the bottom line. And I think you came to the same conclusion. And I think there should be some area counties, even farther away there in a pinch to take garbage somewhere. Uh, that could be pretty lucrative for the county. I I would think so, but I don't know that, but I would assume that people would be looking for spots to haul their their garbage to. So, thank you.
Yes, we we agree with your comments on all three of those. Trash should pay for trash. That was one of the things we talked about in the committee early on. And uh we do think there's plenty of municipalities, counties all across upstate New York that could really use a place for their trash. So it's really, we'd like to keep it as a central New York thing because what's good for central New York is good for Madison County. So that's uh good comments. Thank you.
Any further comments, any questions? If not, Bob, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I can't imagine what the bill would be. And this is the way government should work. We have local volunteers working to help us and 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 great volunteers. So we've got an award for you, Bob, if you could step forward and Evan, please come up. Can't read it backwards.
Oh, you want me to read it? Okay. Madison County honors solid waste recycling technical team member Robert Kuchenberger in recognition of your leadership to preserve our community's resources and protect our environment for generations to come.
Thank you.
Okay, proclamation Rex.
Yeah, and before I start, this is a proclamation for recognition of the Sheriff's Week, September fourteenth through the twentieth. I just want to say our last criminal justice meeting happened to be on the twenty-seventh of August. And as you well know, if you remember that day, uh we had tragedies striking out of Minnesota at a Catholic school. And uh that day was the first in Madison County history. Uh, we appointed a special parole officer to, uh, let me see where it is here, St. Patrick's School District in Oneida, I believe. Uh, they approached us and wanted to have an officer in the school. And it's ironic that we approved at my committee. It's going to go on full board today, obviously. But uh I just wanted to put a shout out that uh it was kind of ironic how the the days events that day. Uh, it was a great decision, I think, my committee made to approve this uh police officer for the Catholic school in in Oneida. So whereas an office of sheriff has been an integral part of the criminal justice system in New York State and Madison County throughout our history, having been established in the state's first constitution in seventeen seventy-seven. And having been, having been continued in every succeeding constitution and having been one of our original constitutional off offices upon the founding of our county. And whereas despite changes in its function, status and power during its long history, the office of sheriff has maintained a continuous existence, preserved and distinguished heritage and continued to be an essential component of our criminal justice community. And whereas the office of sheriff is involved into a modern, professional, full-service law enforcement and corrections agency manned by well-trained police officers and correctional officers using state-of-the-art technology and applying the latest and most advanced theories and practices in the fields of law enforcement and corrections. And whereas the office of sheriff is unique, is the unique community and the building of the office go far beyond the traditional role of keeper of the peace. And extended in many facets of public service beyond law enforcement and corrections to include providing security to our courts, dispatching emergency services, inhaling the civil process for our courts. And whereas as a constitutionally empowered office directly responsible to the people, the ancient office of the sheriff remains even today responsive and accountable to the public it serves. Whereas it is fitting to celebrate the historical contributions of the office of sheriff, significant role the sheriff plays in our modern criminal justice system. Now, before we, the Madison County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize the important services provided to the citizens of this county by Sheriff Todd Hood and the members of his sheriff's office and do hereby proclaim September fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-five to be Sheriff's Week in Madison County.
Thank you, Rex. Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, moving on to the preferred agenda, Emily, resolutions.
Yep. First, we're going to start off by kicking it over to our GOC Chair Pete Walrod. We have resolutions one through four today in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, I move these resolutions for adoption.
Can I have a second? Kyle, discussion. Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Henderson.
Hi.
Jones. Pennard. Reeger.
Aye.
Ruder. Roberts. Schwartz.
Yes.
Stepansky.
Yes.
Vosberg.
Yes.
Walrod.
Aye.
Wicks.
Yes.
Win. Kavanaugh. Corbin. Cunningham.
Yes.
Davio. Derry.
Aye.
Fourteen hundred and sixteen votes in favor. All right, next we'll look at our finance ways and means uh preferred agenda. We'll kick it over to our committee chairman, Matt Roberts. Resolutions five through eleven in your packet today. If you have a little update on your committee as well, we'll take that now.
Oh, you want an update too? How come GOC didn't have to do that? Um, well, I'll do I'll do the GOC too, I guess. Now, um, uh, finance, a little update. We have our budget hearings next uh Monday through Wednesday. I implore everyone around the horseshoe to please, if you could, go to the meet budget hearings. Um, it's a very important part of our job. Um, DMV continues to outperform last year. Um, and our sales tax, Mark mentioned earlier, we're up over seven percent at NISAC this week. We're probably one of the best um performing counties in the state, actually. Um, so that's that's a that's a breath of fresh air with a lot of other headwinds we're dealing with. And um the one um, one of the uh resolutions is local law, which we do every year to override the tax levy limit. And then we get working on the budget and the rest of the uh resolutions are budget modifications. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move these resolutions for adoption.
Can I have a second? Tom, discussion. Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Jones. Pennard. Reeger.
Aye.
Ruder. Roberts. Schwartz.
Yes.
Stepansky.
Yes.
Vosberg.
Yes.
Walrod.
Aye.
Wicks.
Yes.
Win.
Yeah.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Corbin.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Davio. Derry. Okay, she said.
Sorry.
Henderson.
Aye.
Fourteen hundred and sixteen votes in favor. Next, we'll see if our Health and Human Services Committee Chairman would like to give a brief update on the committee.
Thank you. Yeah, um, we heard from our uh budget summaries from mental, public health, social services and veterans affairs. And as Matt mentioned, the budget hearings to drill down line by line will be next week and I'll be attending those. Um, Tisha reported that our mental health crisis worker started at Oneida Police Department due to a grant our police chief um obtained. So that program is underway. Uh, Ron reported that our last Veterans Breakfast at Theodore saw increased participation. And I wanted to thank Ron and his team for coordinating these as it gives our vets an opportunity to gather in bond with other veterans. Um, Eric from Public Health reported that we received jewel funds of three hundred and fifty thousand, fifty thousand over the next five years and we'll be asking the community members to, on how to address the vaping um in our communities and how to best use these funds. Um, and we had two resolutions. Uh, one is for a mandatory upgrade to our servers and the second's for an A I initiative, um, with TIPCO for a system called Eva, which would be available twenty-four hours to help our, uh, Department of Social Services clients and make that process more efficient.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll go over to our planning chairwoman, Evan Schwartz. If you'd like to give us a quick up.
Uh, just briefly, we had the meeting at Delphi Falls, which was, um, that was our sort of a unusual aspect of our meeting. It was very nice. We were able to, uh, hold the, the committee meeting there and invite invited guests from, um, some of the legislators that represent us. So that was great. Got to showcase the program. Um, I think we primarily did a budget hearing, um, budget review of Scott and the Planning Department. No real significant changes there. Um, we are, we will be, I think actually might even have a slight decrease in the budget. So, um, and then we had regular reports from the different agencies that, that serve, but nothing unusual. And we have one resolution that's, uh, to hold a public hearing on a C D B G grant specifically for, uh, gosh. The brothers in blanking on the name. Yeah. Yeah. The, uh, yeah. Ray Brothers, thank you. Smokehouse. Yes, they're gonna be opening up a bill. Sorry, sorry. You know, this is why. No, not Brooks Brothers and the Ray Brothers is gonna be opening up a barbecue place in, uh, Village of Hamilton. And so we, and they're potentially going to receive a C D B G grant. So that's it.
Great, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna go to our Criminal Justice Public Safety Chair, Rex Bosberg. You have resolutions twelve through seventeen in your packet today. If you'd like to give a little brief update as well.
Yeah, uh, six total, five actually are all for these S P Os and, uh, Special Patrol Officers in our, in our schools. Uh, DeRider, my hometown, Casanova, Oneida City, Chittango, and as I mentioned before, St. Patrick's. The sixth resolution is, uh, EMS is struggling in this county as it is throughout the state and the country. But it's very expensive and, uh, some of the H E's are, it always kicks us over the tax cap. So we did a, uh, a, uh, legislation, uh, uh, resolution to encourage the governor to not have that impact the tax cap on county, county budgets. And, uh, that's about it. So, so I, uh, I move these resolutions for adoption.
Can I have a second? Joe. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call please.
Pennard. Rieger.
Aye.
Ruder.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Stepansky.
Yes.
Bosberg.
Yes.
Walrath.
Aye.
Wicks.
Yes.
Win. Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Corbin.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Davio. Dury.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Fourteen hundred and sixteen votes in favor. Next, we'll, uh, discuss our Highway Buildings and Grounds Committee resolutions and have a quick update from the committee chair, Lauren Corbin.
We have four resolutions on the highway. One was King and King for engineering services on the Health and Human Service roof. Uh, another one from Burns Brothers for the Board of Elections and the H V A C piping upgrades. Another one from Walker Tree Cream for line clearance, tree trimming on the Texas Hill nine-one-one tower. And another modification to Boo Brothers Concrete Coating in the Public Safety Building. And for facilities, uh, Reconnect Project, Highway Phase Two, Highway Administrative Building Demolition, Public Health Office renovation, D M V data drops, jury box re- uh, ratification. Board of Elections, uh, H V A C upgrade, Public Health, same upgrades, Public Safety Building Door, and there's another half a page. So just to say they're doing a lot of work would be an understatement. And I move these resolutions for adoption.
Thank you, Lauren. Can I have a second? Tom. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call please.
Rieger.
Aye.
Ruder.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Stepansky.
Yes.
Bosberg.
Yes.
Walrath.
Aye.
Wicks.
Yes.
Win.
Yes.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Corbin.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Davio.
Yes.
Derry.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Pennard.
Aye.
Fourteen hundred and sixteen votes in favor. Next, if our solid waste chairwoman of the committee, can you give us a brief update?
I sure can. Good morning, everyone. I apologize. I am not with you in person, but we had a really great meeting. Um, Greg presented the twenty-twenty-six proposed budget and proposed tip fees. And it looks wonderful. He did an excellent job. And we have the solid, solid waste open house event, which will be scheduled for September twenty-seventh from eight to eleven and will be held in conjunction with the Town of Lincoln Fall Festival, which will be from eleven A M to four P M. I apologize, my German Shepherd's crying in the back. I swear she has been fed. She does not think so. Sorry, um, I have two resolutions, which is the approving, uh, trade-in for a two thousand and five Bobcat and an authorization, um, to enter into an agreement with Recovery Drilling Services for installing, uh, the landfill gas collection wells. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Moving on to the regular agenda.
Yep, we have our resolution number twenty-two in the packet today is appointing an information technology director. This is Pete Walrath, Chairman, G O C Committee.
Mister Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Can I have a second, Rex? Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Gary. Congratulations, Rob. Stand up, Rob. Stop asking me for all those passwords, will you, Rob?
Excellent. All right, we'll move on to our next resolution, which is designating a HIPAA security officer. Once again, this is Pete Walrath, Chairman, Government Operations Committee.
Mister Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Can I have a second? Gary. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Gary.
Number twenty-four in your packet today is authorizing the chairman to enter into an agreement with Ventec Incorporated. This is Mary Kavanaugh, Chairwoman, Health and Human Services Committee.
Mister Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Can I have a second?
You almost got me. I almost wrote it down.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary.
Next in your packet today is resolution number twenty-five, authorizing the chairman to enter into an agreement with TIPCO. Once again, this is Mary Kavanaugh, Chairwoman, Health and Human Services Committee.
Mister Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Can I have a second? Who haven't I gotten here? Joe? Joe? Alex? Yeah, Alex. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Gary.
Resolution number twenty-six is calling for a public hearing regarding the submission of the Community Development Block Grant application. This is Evan Schwartz, Chairwoman, Planning Committee.
Mister Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Can I have a second? Kyle, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Gary.
Resolution number twenty-seven is approving the trade-in of a two thousand and five Bobcat S one eighty-five skid loader. This is Melissa Dury, Chairwoman, Solid Waste Recycling Committee.
Mister Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Can I have a second? Joe. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Gary.
Resolution number twenty-eight is authorizing the chairman to enter into an agreement with Recovery Drilling Services L L C for the installation of landfill gas collection wells. This is Melissa Dury, Chairwoman, Solid Waste Recycling Committee.
Mister Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Evan, second.
Yeah, second. And I just want to point out that this is the work that was already ongoing by the solid waste department to de-water the gas wells in order to increase gas production. So we're, we're on it already. And, you know, hopefully this will, will begin to increase the, the quality and quantity of the gas.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Gary.
Last resolution in your packet today is calling for a public hearing regarding the submission of the Community Development Block Grant Application. This is Mary Kavanaugh, Chairwoman, Health and Human Services Committee.
Mister Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Can I have a second? Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Gary.
Well, I have the resolutions.
Okay. Um, we have a few statements to make before we do, oops. We have a few statements to make before we enter the second public, uh, forum. And, uh, Pete, if you'd like to make a statement.
Yes, sir. For the past several years, Madison County has been evaluating options to address the long-term space needs of our campus. Initially, in early twenty twenty-four, the county was preparing to meet those needs through a major renovation of a tax foreclosed facility in Canostota with an estimated cost of nearly ten million. In December twenty twenty-four, representatives from Nine Fresh approached Madison County with an opportunity to consider buildings on the former Casanova College campus for potential lease or purchase. Over the following months, county leadership, facilities, information technology, members of the sheriff's office and emergency management conducted detailed site visits to evaluate the feasibility of this option. After thorough review by the Building and Grounds Committee and ultimately the Board of Supervisors, the board approved a purchase agreement in May twenty twenty-five for Reesman Hall and Siggety Hall at a cost of approximately one point nine million. The properties require only minor renovations to prepare them for county use, saving taxpayers millions of dollars. The agreement was executed in July twenty twenty-five. This decision reflects a thoughtful pivot from a costly renovation project to a practical, cost-effective solution. It demonstrates the county's commitment to fiscal responsibility while ensuring our facilities meet the needs of both the staff and the public. In addition, relocating approximately forty to sixty employees to downtown Casanova will provide a boost to the local economy. We stand by the decision to purchase these vacant properties on the former Casanova College campus and believe it represents the best, best outcome for both Madison County and the Casanova community.
Thank you, Pete. Have a statement. We're all neighbors in Madison County. This is a small county. We really need to all get along together. All our town supervisors that you see here today and some that aren't here today, they work very hard for this county to do the best thing for this county. I think it's important to have facts when we make decisions. We make a lot of decisions as a board. And some of these decisions, like the landfills you saw today, are very complicated. And I think that there's been a lot of rumors going around and misinformation. We all talk about that in the media today. But, uh, I think it's important to get the facts on the table. And, uh, and we were invited to this building when we were looking at saving money for the taxpayers of Madison County. And I think this board has done a good job of doing the evaluation. We're not in control of the purchase process of this. We are, have been invited. We don't know if it's gonna, can, gonna happen or not. It may and it may not. But, uh, with that said, um, one of our goals was to put EMS and nine-one-one sheriff together in one building, which makes sense for us and creates room at this campus to do things that we need to do because of our growth. And with that, I'd like to introduce Sheriff Todd Hood to, uh, to give you some of the facts. Thank you, Sheriff.
So I guess I could, uh, kind of dispel some of the things that are going on, uh, you know, and kind of give you guys an idea of why we're looking to do this also. You know, the numbers kind of speak for themselves. It would save the county millions of dollars, uh, by a building that's already there. Uh, Casanova, obviously, the old county building was in there years ago. It was in Morrisville at one time and then it came here. So it's, uh, nothing new for the village. It was a county location in the past. It's centralized, which is great for the deputies, uh, who would be out there. Uh, nice centralized location. It's fully furnished, uh, the colleges. So the classrooms, uh, where, where all the academic, uh, went on are still there and, and all of the infrastructures there also, all the desks, the overheads and a lot of the, uh, I T things are there. So this could literally be a training center for central New York police agencies. We struggle, uh, to find places. I use Morrisville State once in a while when we have a big training, uh, requirement. But in the county, we don't have a centralized location where we can go for that to bring people in. And I mean hundreds of people for police training. Uh, obviously, you guys know how important that is to keep us, uh, trained with everything that's going on and all the changes and, and laws in New York State and across the country in policing. So this would be, uh, the, the ideal building for that. It's training ready. Uh, currently, uh, our law enforcement building, the sheriff's office was built with the jail, uh, back in the early eighties, I believe, or late seventies. Uh, at that time, they had one deputy and they would run blood across the state. That was the job. That was why they hired them. So they would transfer blood via state police sheriff's office and do runs across the state. And there was never a patrol division put in the sheriff's office now. So the correctional facility, which is on the campus here, we have a few of our offices in there, uh, such as pistol permits and things like that. But our patrol division got moved, uh, in the administration before me to a concrete, uh, structure garage across the street. And they, they've been there ever since. And it's inadequate. Uh, anybody who's been in law enforcement, there's not even showers in there. Uh, where if they get contaminated at a house, they can go get cleaned up before they go home to their families. We deal with some horrific things in law enforcement, uh, bodily fluids, blood, uh, lice, all the things that we encounter on search warrants. You know, it's nice to get cleaned up before you go home and, uh, go, go into your households. You don't want to do anything like that. Uh, it's limited space. Like I said, it's a concrete structure, no showers. Uh, we have looked for other locations. Uh, there was a building down the road that we looked at, uh, probably four or five years ago. Uh, they have a, I believe flax clothing is in there now. Uh, that didn't work out. Uh, this building, we're, we're hoping will. Uh, there's been a lot of, of things that get back to me as far as rumors. Uh, people are claiming we're gonna house children, uh, in the, in the middle of Casanova, in, uh, imprison them. The only time we have children is when there's not a bed available, available by the state. When they implemented raise the age, they didn't put any additional beds across the state. So we can't put sixteen and seventeen-year-olds in the county jail. So due to the state's lack of accountability, the juveniles have to stay in our crippled criminal division till we can find an open bed, which means they'd be better off in the jail if there was no sight or sound. They have showers, meals, uh, social workers, uh, psychiatrists, things of that nature. So when you hear of children being housed in law enforcement agencies, our state police have to do it. And who do they rely on when they have to have a kid for a couple of days till a bed is opened up? Your county sheriff. We bring them beds. We bring them food from the jail and then the state police have to watch them. So that's not the criminal division. That's the correctional, uh, division. So, um, we won't be housing any children in, in, in that area. I can take questions if you guys want. If you have anything else, you guys, uh, are out in the towns and villages and you, you hear a lot, um, cumulatively, if you have any questions for me, I'd be, I'd be willing to answer your questions. I think it would be a great building. Uh, you know, I would think, uh, that people would like to have that in their community. But apparently there's a, a, a very small percentage of Madison County residents who do not like the police. They don't want them around. And I get that. There's two sides to everything, but I think in general, Madison County, I've lived here the entirety of my life. I love it. It's a safe place to live. When I look at what's going on across our country, you know, I, I've been sick the past couple of days. Absolutely sick to my stomach. And we don't have that in Madison County because of the great people that are here. And by people like you who, who serve, uh, our citizens and you're all elected just like I am. We're all accountable to the people. And, uh, I appreciate all that you do. So if you have any questions, I'll take them now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Todd. So at this time, we'll open the, uh, public comment period number two. I will call up, uh, in order that you signed in, uh, to talk, please state your name for the record and your address. Uh, your testimony will be recorded and we'll give you three minutes each for a cop, for your testimony. Thank you. So the first person is Julie.
Thank you. So the first person is Julie Carlson.
Thank you. My name is Julie. Can you guys hear me? My name is Julie Carlson. I'm a resident of Lebanon. I'm also a small business owner with a private maternity care practice.
Know what you mean about the body fluids.
I deal with that too. So it is nice to have a shower after you get covered in some things. Yeah, that's important. And the more resources you have in your workplace, the better you can do your job. Same with healthcare providers. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to share my concerns regarding the purchase of the building in Casanova and also, Sheriff, your agreement to work with ICE. And specifically, I'm concerned about the lack of transparency that's happened with this. And also, yes, there are rumors, and rumors start and fester and often can get out of control when the transparency isn't there, when there isn't... But yeah, yeah, I just, I feel bad with my back to you guys. Yeah, thank you, Sheriff. And so, thank you, Sheriff, for speaking a little bit more today about the plans for the building. And we want more of this. And thank you for the time for all of us here today to speak about this. So how can we get more communication with the public? It's important that our supervisors and the sheriff know how many of us have these concerns. It might be that you think we're a small percentage because there is an ample opportunity for the many of us who have the concerns that we do. So not only does the lack of transparency start rumors and let those grow, it also doesn't inspire confidence. It erodes public trust. And you know this, safety doesn't improve when the public doesn't trust our law enforcement officers. And lack of trust in law enforcement not only drives people away from using this important public service, it makes us afraid of you, the officers who have pledged to keep us safe. And in what healthy democracy is it normal to have an elected official make decisions without full transparency? There are many of us who are very concerned about our democracy, and one thing that we can do to make it stronger is to increase communication with the public and increase transparency. We are all here because we care about our community. Thank you for your public service. Thanks for being on your feet all day. It's not easy and for putting your lives at risk and for taking time away from your families and the work that you do apart from your jobs as supervisors to help us. And we know that we, as a public, have a responsibility also to contribute to our communities as well. And that's why many of us are here today. And specifically, in terms of the agreement that you've made with ICE, Sheriff, it's scary. It's scary that we don't know exactly what your plans are. We've seen in other communities that it starts with the 287G agreement. That expands, that expands, and then that expands to a stronger ICE presence in the community. You said how lucky we are to be in this county. Our crime rate is low. We don't see a number of, we don't see a lot of crime, and we don't see a lot of crime, you know, by citizens or also from immigrants. Did you say time? Ah, okay. So I know that more of this will be talked about with other people speaking. Thank you so much.
Give you an extra minute. Next speaker is Nancy Reese.
Thank you. Good morning, supervisors and public. My name is Nancy Reese, 110 Sunny Point South in Hamilton. I've lived in Madison County for over three decades. You all received letters I submitted during the July and over the 287G agreement Sheriff Todd Hood signed with ICE. Under that agreement, county law enforcement officers may have to participate in raids, detention, and transport of, quote, "any aliens arrested pursuant to the immigration laws." The wording of the agreement with ICE is vague and open-ended. And in the meeting of July 23rd, Sheriff Hood acknowledged that the agreement could be expanded. When one of the supervisors here expressed fear that, quote, "when barging in on one person, you could sweep up four or five or six," Sheriff Hood responded, quote, "Somebody may be swept up. We have to have a criminal charge, but there could be collateral damage." Collateral damage. Look at the community in Cato, New York after the ICE raid on nutrition bar confectioners. Nobody arrested in that raid has been charged with a violent crime. People swept up in that raid left behind US citizen children and spouses. Some kids had to get care through the Cuyuga County Department of Social Services. Detainees from the Cato raid have been sent all over the country or deported without due process, without access to their immigration lawyer, which our law entitles them. Spectrum and other mainstream news outlets reported that people with legal work authorization were taken into custody and sent into detention. Is this kind of collateral damage coming soon to Madison County? ICE needs to fulfill quotas. When will the manufacturers, farms, cafes, and care facilities in your towns be raided? How many perfectly lawful immigrants, perhaps people of color with Spanish surnames or accents, will be rounded up as collateral damage? Some folks brush off the Cato raid, saying, "If they are legal, they should carry their papers." Well, do they realize that documentation of the right to be in the United States is not at all straightforward? There are more than 100 ways to be legally documented in this country. Visa holders do not just get cards that say "legal" or "documented." Documentation is often a sheath of confusing papers accompanying a stamp in a passport, documents that workers keep in the safest possible places. After this meeting, look in your wallets. What documents do you carry that show you are a US citizen or lawful resident lawfully allowed to work here? Your driver's license does not provide citizenship or visa information. Do your credit cards, your supermarket bonus cards? If your name is Smith or Thompson or Reese, like mine, and you are white, like me, without an accent, maybe you'll be okay when ICE comes. But if you speak with an accent and you're Chan or Abdul, raiding businesses and rounding people up is inhumane and destructive. Our immigration system is broken. People may live here legally in visa or asylum limbo with cases pending for years and decades, documented but highly vulnerable to the violence of ICE. Ask the supervisors. Look in your wallets to be sure you're documented. And then look in your hearts and at the spirit of integrity which you thing. Beg, pressure, do anything you can to get Sheriff Hood to activate the termination clause in Section 8 of the ICE agreement. Ask him to terminate that agreement. Stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Nancy. Laura Reader, Casanova.
Thank you. Is it working? Yes. Good morning, or afternoon, I should say. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Laura Reader, and I am here with fellow residents of Casanova, Madison County, and on behalf of the Anti-Racism Coalition of Casanova. We're here to share our concerns about Madison County's planned purchase of Reisman and Siggety Halls on the former Casanova College campus. We are deeply concerned about three central issues of transparency, proposed land use, and public safety. Under transparency and process, we care very much about three other sub-items. The purchase was pursued without meaningful community input in our community. Residents and even some local officials were left in the dark until the deal was already well underway. Village, town, county, and Nine Fresh leaders each had information at different points. Yet no one took the responsibility to reach out and inform our public. This lack of transparency has seriously eroded trust. We do want to thank County Administrator Mark Simone. Thank you. And Town Supervisor Kyle Rieger for being upfront and responsive only last week when residents got word and began to ask questions. This information still should never have reached the community so very late in the process, one year after the beginning of the research began. Land use and community voice is our next concern. Once Madison County does own Reisman Hall, which is located at the gateway to this campus between the ice cream stand and the beautiful walkable campus that's being proposed in its development, it could be changed at any time with little chance for residents to weigh in. The parcels are currently zoned for educational use, and rezoning and plan development must involve full community process with community input, which already, we can see, has already bypassed us and is going to the Attorney General's office. Without clear agreements as guardrails against government overreach, the property risks being used in ways that undermine, rather than strengthen, our village center. And finally, the potential demolition of parts of the site to create surface parking or to build in additional generators that might be necessary or safety apparatus that's required. It's not going to impact our downtown vibe very well. And I'm not worried about vibe. We're worried actually about the safety and concern of people dealing with so much coming and going in a more industrial capacity than a living space. Public safety and equity are the final concern. Many residents feel completely unsafe about placing a large police presence and dispatching emergency operations in the heart of the village where youth, seniors, and visitors walk every day. And now, as Sheriff Hood proposed, bringing more officers for training plus firearm control? We have already suffered two years of having a police academy, which we thought was, again, a nice opportunity, educational use, onto our campus, but it created a gaping hole in community right there and a sense of no safety for people who feel othered and unsafe around folks in uniform. Given the sheriff's past cooperation with ICE, which we've already heard today, folks are seriously concerned because it does not create the racial equity, equitable, welcoming tone that Casanova has in policy, both at town and village in their anti-racism statements. It would also overshadow our local policing agency. Our request to the county is that the county pause all plans for Reisman and Siggety Halls until a thorough public planning process can occur. And that they would commit to respecting village land use laws and not seek exemption from them. Our request to County Supervisor, or all supervisors, sorry, and Supervisor Kyle Rieger is that first, we thank you for listening to your residents and voicing concerns at earlier meetings, but we hope that you will now advocate for pausing the Attorney General's review of the purchase immediately until there has become a full public process. Meet directly with Casanova residents to share all aspects of the county plans before any decisions are finalized and represent our community's call for transparency, equity, and full accountability in all discussions moving forward. The Casanova residents are not opposed to thoughtful collaborative and development of the former college campus.
Thank you.
We do support a process that helps folks to engage and create strength instead of exclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. Bill Bolin? Bill?
I said Bill.
Chairman, come in please, and members of the board. I am Bill Bolin. I come to you not only as a concerned Madison County citizen, but as a former public servant. So I've sat in your chair in a different capacity. I was a former Commissioner of Education for the Syracuse City School Board. I live at 4477 Ridge Road in Casanova. So from a political standpoint, for moral, ethical, and legal reasons, I respectfully ask this board, together with the Casanova Village, town leaders, and Nine Fresh, to pause the current process and commit to a robust public engagement before proceeding with any final sale with Reisman Hall to Madison County. During the Casanova Village Board Meeting on September 2nd and the Casanova Town Board Meeting on September 9th, dozens of residents spoke out about the lack of transparency and the potential consequences of the county's proposed purchase of Reisman and Siggety Halls. Citizens raised urgent questions about the governance, land use, public safety, community trust, and the impact Casanova's character and economy. Citizens are calling for the board to pause the Attorney General review and county purchase until residents have had time for meaningful input. Two, ensure transparency by sharing information early and openly. Three, respect local land use laws and zoning processes. And four, protect the community's character, economic and values, economy and values. The proposed sale of Reisman Hall to Madison County is not simply a transaction between municipality and a small group of private investors. It's a decision that will shape the cultural, civic, and economic life of Casanova for generations. While the county leadership, Casanova Village and Town Leadership, Nine Fresh, have all been aware of the sale, Casanova citizens have not been given a chance to weigh in on this very important decision. Hiding this deal from the public has eroded the community trust in our leadership. The moral responsibility. Reisman Hall is more than a piece of real estate. It's a public asset built and maintained through the contributions and the tax and the trust of the people of Casanova and Madison County. The public, therefore, has a moral right to be heard about the future of a property that belongs to them. To proceed without a robust community input risks erosion of trust that citizens place in their local government and diminishes the shared sense of ownership that binds us together as a community. The ethical obligation. Good governance, as you know, is not about efficiency, but also about transparency and fairness. An ethical government ensures the decisions affecting the common good are made openly and inclusively. Seeking public input respects the principles of those mostly affected by decisions, by the decision to deserve a seat at the table. By engaging residents now, leaders will not only safeguard public trust, but also benefit from the collective wisdom, creativity, and vision of the community. Legal considerations. New York's Open State Meetings Law and Freedom of Information Law establish a framework to guarantee transparency in government decision-making. While these laws may not explicitly require a referendum or vote on every municipal sale, they do affirm the public's legal right to access information and participate meaningful in processes involving public resources. Courts in New York have consistently reinforced the public property. Transactions require transparency, disclosure, and fair opportunity for community input to avoid even the appearance of impropriety. By involving the public, the county and the local officials will not only strengthen the legitimacy of their actions, but also protect themselves from potential legal consequences that could delay or derail the sale. The decision about Reisman Hall is a test of leadership. Will our elected officials make the choice to close this deal with a handful of voices or engage the public? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Rebecca Downing?
Good afternoon. My name's Rebecca Downing. I live at 4 Link Lane Terrace in Casanova. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I won't repeat things that were said already, but I echo many of them. Just want to add my voice to say that I am one of the residents that would like to see more public input and a process where community members throughout the county could comment about these plans. And I think it's very important because when there are gaps in communication, when there are gaps in process, where different municipal entities and structures are working amongst themselves or maybe in separation, and there isn't a complete cohesive conversation, things can get missed. And I think there's an opportunity here to have the community give input that could help this become an even stronger plan. But I think it needs to happen that there should be a pause so that this can take place. I have great respect for our law enforcement. I have law enforcement members in my family. And, you know, it's not about that. It's about process and transparency. And you know, it's not about that. It's about process and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you Rebecca. Laura McGee.
Good afternoon. I apologize. I'm feeling under the weather today, so I'm going to try to be brief. But I had come here today mainly not to make a statement, but to ask a question. And I have to thank Nancy Reese, who basically said, "everything that is on my mind and in my heart" that I needed to say to give you the context for the question I'm going to ask. The problem is that what's happened during this meeting just now has kind of derailed what I wanted to ask. So I'm going to start real quick with the question and then I'm going to sort of lay out a problem that I see here. My question is. What is the plan to protect the constitutional rights of citizens of Madison County? When we look at these raids in Cato, the research now actually shows that there were five legitimate judicial warrants. For five people who have committed the offense, the criminal offense of reentry into the United States. But dozens of people were swept up and immediately deported using those five warrants as a veil. The thing is, being here undocumented is not a crime. It's a civil issue. And people are in various states of the documentation process at any given moment. Which means that each individual case needs to be reviewed to see where they are and whether or not they have committed a crime. What was done in Cato was unconstitutional. We just listened to a message about Sheriff's Week in which the constitution was mentioned twice. So tell me, what is the plan? And Sheriff Hood, I am here to hold you accountable and I will be back. Until I get reasonable answers to what the plan is. Okay, what is the plan? That's my question. Now the problem I see here, and this is difficult because this is what I've done my whole life. This is what I do. I have no standing in this community. I am no one of consequence. And I do not care what any of you think of me. I really don't. As a human being. I need you to understand how all of this reads to me as a human being. When you know why we're all here and we sit through an announcement about Sheriff's Week, are you kidding me? And you pat each other on the backs and you're giving awards and you're talking about ice cream. We are on the verge of a crisis and I am not seeing or hearing anything.
Time.
That reads like you get it. That's the problem.
Thank you Laura. Is there anyone else here today that would like to speak that hasn't signed up? Final statement. There's been a lot of talk about transparency. I think I told you before, we were not the lead. We are not the lead for this process. We were invited to this process. We had had two meetings that were open to the public. January 22nd, Highway Buildings and Grounds Committee in an open meeting discussed this purchase. On May, four months later, on May 13th, the Board of Supervisors discussed this process in an open meeting and approved the purchase of Reisman and Siggety. So I mean, it's not our fault that you don't read our minutes, that you don't pay attention to what's going on always. It's difficult. I understand. But we have been as transparent as possible and we are not in the lead of this process. I know you feel like that we should be completely telling you everything we do every day, but it's, it's difficult for government. These meetings are open to the public. They're recorded. You can see those meetings. Our, our, our PIO does a wonderful job of getting information out to the public. And we think we are extremely transparent and I honor these board members that served for so many hours here. So much time is put into this to be transparent. And some of the things that you say are just plain rumors. So I'm sorry that, that you feel that way. So thank you.
First of all, I'll talk to the major and Troop D and O'Nida and let them know that you were unhappy with them down there. I'm very sorry to hear that. So you're talking a lot about the warrants in Cato. Cato was a false identification ring that was going on. They had a lawful search warrant from a federal judge with probable cause. And I, I've been speaking on this a lot. We can't accept people in the county jail who do not have a criminal charge attached to them. We just had a girl come this morning. Came into the jail, fictitious items, false paper license plate, false Mexican ID. She was actually from Guatemala, all false identification. They arrested her. They brought her to jail on forgery charges. They ran the warrant check. They took her fingerprint. She popped positive for an ICE detainer. We contacted ICE and they came down and got her because she was in there on criminal charges. So if you think we're doing any of this stuff maliciously, targeting these businesses, it's not. It's because we get complaints with a probable cause and the judge signs the court order. So if ICE signs the order, we're not doing anything. That's an administrative civil order. If a judge does, I have to act. When the sheriff takes office, I have to support and enforce the Constitution of the United States of America and what else? The Constitution of the state of New York. Those are the only two things that are sworn in when I swear in deputies. That's the oath that I took and also I can't turn my back on things like that. The sheriff's office, one of our things that we do is to enforce the laws of New York State and the laws of America. So I hope that simplifies things a little bit for some of you guys. There's nothing going on here. And I, I have investigations. Batisha James, Assistant for the State of New York, who had nothing political. Hundreds of keybets of drugs and hundreds of thousands of dollars in drug money. And we worked with her seamlessly in, in the sheriff's office because that's what we do. We help people to keep people safer. And these are the drugs that are killing people. So I will work with anybody who can help me and magnify the authority that we have to make us stronger and to protect people. That's my ultimate, ultimate objective is to save lives. So if you guys ever need anything else, you're free to contact me. Many of you have always have a conversation. For some of you guys, I've had two or three conversations, right? So you can come talk to me. Yeah, I'm the sheriff of all the residents in Madison County. If you don't believe in what I'm trying to do, I'm still here, so we might as well work together.
Thank you Sheriff. Madison County is a very safe place to live. Is there any other business that come before this board today? Okay, can I motion to adjourn? Tom, Mary?